Okay, it's streaming now.
We're good?
Yep.
Thank you, Sherri. I want you to call the special board meeting work session to order roll call.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yeah, President.
Yeah. Mrs. Kitson? Yep. See ya. Mrs. Thomas is there? Yep. Mrs. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Jubey?
Here. The purpose is to conduct a work session to discuss the Bulldog Digital Academy and the opening of the 2021 school year, and a few other things. At this time, I'll turn over to Mr. Hanky, but I would appreciate if any questions to Mr. Hanky and Mr. Rysland and Mr. Patton and Mr. Sluka will be taken after their presentation to go to orderly fashion. Mr. Hanky, you're up.
Thank you, President Jubey. As we all know, we're in a situation where we had have to develop a plan, first of all, for remote learning, and secondly, that's mandated by the state of Ohio, and secondly, a reopening school plan. What the board, I sent to the board earlier today, and for the public, this is in draft form, so it's a working document for the Board of Education. It is a remote learning plan, but what I did was I also encompassed a reopening plan within the remote learning plan, so everything could be in one place. There were six components that were mandated by the Ohio Department of Education to be in a remote learning plan. They were how students' learning needs will be determined and documented, methods for determining competency, granting credit and promoting students, attendance requirements, student progress monitoring, equitable access to quality instruction, and PD activities to be offered to teachers. Within the document that I have, and I'm not going to read this word for word, but I wanted to outline the three major approaches we believe will benefit our students given the COVID-19 pandemic. First, well, actually, kind of four, excuse me. First, we want to have a fully online option for students that do not feel comfortable coming back to school due to COVID-19 and in the absence of a vaccine. We also wanted to have a hybrid approach, and this is certainly something to be discussed where we have in half the students in the building at any one time. A couple of different approaches could be instituted here. You could have what's called a 2-1-2 approach, which a number of districts in this area are looking at where we have half the students in for, excuse me, in-person learning two days a week, say Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday would be a fully online day for all students, also to help with cleaning and sanitation of buildings. And Thursday, Friday would be an approach where the second group of students would come in. The second approach that we are pursuing is to have the students in, half the students in for one week, and then the other half, the other week, they'd be virtual, and then they'd flip. If the county Board of Health or other government entity, I put in the plan shutter schools, but with the governor's announcement, you could also say a number of districts in the area are looking at if it goes to level four purple, which means wide community spread, there'd be an all-online experience offered to students. Going into the determination of this plan, we launched two different surveys. One was a more comprehensive scientific survey, and the other was a survey to see who would be interested in an online option. And you know, what we did was we came up with the idea of an all-online option that we coined the Bulldog Digital Academy. It's located in Appendix C of the document. I also wanted to reference a number of board policies for granting credit, promoting students and competency determination. I think those would still be in effect, no matter what model we used. In attendance requirements, what I did with that was I took our board policies and coupled them with the use of an online learning system. I use that term because there could be a couple of different systems that are deployed by the district to reach all the students. And I specifically wanted to reiterate in the attendance section that there are excused absenteeism for specific COVID-related reasons such as student infection, immediate family member infection causing household quarantine, any other health agency mandated quarantine period, any other COVID infection that would cause a student to quarantine, and if a household family member that supports online learning falls ill due to COVID infection is unable to support online learning, attendance would be excused. Couple of the things that we, excuse me, let me go into progress monitoring. We want to stick with the NWEA MAP assessments. And if I could quickly throw this to Mrs. Rysland for a second on MAP assessments and their use within, you know, the models that we're presenting tonight.
Sure. So the mapping is the tool that we use to kind of determine where the students are, and then the progress monitoring tools are the work that they do in between that. We currently have purchased Study Island that we're going to be using as a progress monitoring tool, and that helps us because it's online, and so that's a nice digital little accessory or tool that we have in our toolbox. And with that benchmarking window, it's given three times a year, and we're going to have to make some adjustments because, you know, there's going to be some students online. There's going to be some students here in the building, and we are currently working with MAP to determine what that looks like for students who don't return to school. Last year, there wasn't really the capability to do testing outside of school. This year, they're taking a look at that, and it's going to be a little bit different in terms of benchmarking, but we'll still do that whole, like, fall, mid-year, end of year, or I guess it's more spring, it's not quite end of year. And then we would use those different tools in between the benchmarking windows to see where our students are.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Rysland.
Sure.
Moving forward through the plan, equitable access to quality instruction. I worked with Ms. Yolanda Hamilton, our District Diversity and Equity Coordinator and consultant, and I got some feedback from her. The first thing Mrs. Bailey's been working on, though, to have each student having access to a district-provided Chromebook. Just, I know that some of the, since we're all with the general public, if you do have a Chromebook that's kind of sitting around at home, please try to get it back to us. That's very helpful to us because some of them are at end of life, and they do need to be, you know, make sure that they're operational and ready to go for the fall, so that will be helpful to us so we can get everything ready to go. We've also are in the midst of purchasing a number of them through our supplier. Districts need to work with individual families that are having financial difficulty retaining stable internet access. You know, we sourced a number of hotspots for families in need, but we're going to need to continue to do that. We want to ensure that people have stable internet access. Families also will be provided access to the Family Engagement Coordinator to ensure equitable access to education. She's a good, Mrs. Wilson is a good liaison to the buildings, building principals, and to central office staff to ensure that issues surrounding equity are brought to our attention. Remote and in-person related services will be provided to families of students with disabilities that have set services on their IEPs. I actually was just speaking to Mrs. Pillits today about the ability for remote-related services. Related services include occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy. Those are available. We also are going to do kind of an off-hours and work with each family. So, for example, when you have an IEP meeting and as a family, but you're a digital-only student, we want to ensure that the that we're, if there is an in-person need such as for occupational or physical therapy, that we're able to provide that in an hour, maybe when the buildings are closed. But we're going to work on those, as is indicated by the term IEP individually with parents. We're working with Stephanie D. Michelle and the ESC of Northeast Ohio to provide teachers with training through a Google Classroom format to provide quality online instruction. We're also working with the Teachers Union on this in terms of making sure that the word gets out about this this opportunity for the teachers. And in that, you know, that's going to be, we hope, part of their summer plan for PD, but also, if need be, they can also access this during the PD days at the beginning of the year. I went through the modules, and they're really helpful, they're very practical, and they do help with assessment, and also, which is an issue when you're designing online, a major issue when you're designing online lessons, and also how to design quality lessons. I did put at the bottom a disclaimer that the superintendent, you know, based on guidance from local, state, and national health authorities, we can modify, I can modify this plan. If, and it would be wonderful, there's a vaccine and we eliminate COVID, we'd like to be able to, you know, bring as many kids back as possible. I think, I believe that the online-only option, though, may have some staying power in this district, even beyond COVID. There could be students that do opt for that type of option. What I'd like to do, Mrs. Rysland, if you're ready, is to talk a little bit about the hybrid model and option that we're developing.
So, right now, we are prepared to speak about K-8. We are still in the midst of working out a viable high school plan. The, you know, high school has so many courses, and what we're finding is no matter how many times we sit down to sort of hammer something out, somebody's getting left out, and we're not entirely thrilled with that. So we are working on plans to kind of, we want to keep as many course offerings as humanly possible in the high school. We don't want to limit that. I mean, it's limited already. We don't have, you know, boatloads of electives. So we are still working on that, so stay tuned. For this evening, I'd like to talk a little bit about the K-8 plan, and one of the things that I am most concerned with is building momentum with student learning. And so going back and forth and listening to a lot of other districts and what people are doing, a lot of people are going with like a two-day-on, one-day-off, two-day-on kind of plan. And that's where we initially started as well. It was, you know, a good starting place, and I think that with a little bit of tweaking, I like this idea even more of looking at a five-day-on and five-day-off type plan. So we would have like an A-week and a B-week, and where an A-week is, we would just say, like, for elementary kids, we would just say even grades, so K, 2, and 4 would be present in school all day following their current school building schedule to the best of our abilities, because there are a couple of considerations with this. You know, one of them is transportation. We are still kind of hashing out what transportation looks like. Can we get all kids to school by 8:00? We don't quite know yet, so that may impact the instructional day a touch, but we want to be flexible and sort of keep that same type of day in place. So for an A-week, students in the even grades would come to school. They would go through their regular school day as close as, you know, it can be maintaining social distance and the type of, you know, all the things that we have to keep in mind at this time. And then they would go through their entire five days, a whole week, and then they would stay home the next week. The teacher that is attached to those students would also stay home that week. And during that B-week, they would be instructing kids online. This would be very specialized instruction, and we have something built into the school day right now. We call it IE for intervention and/or enrichment, depending on what students need. This would be a really good time for that to continue. A lot of small group work, a lot of FaceTime with students, small groups, even a one-on-one situation where kids are struggling, they're not picking up a concept. The teacher could create Zoom meetings, they can work with these kids. They can really kind of get down and dirty with these smaller groups of kids. They would also be asked to be teaching them online, touching base whole group as well, but the majority of this would be much more personalized or specialized instruction that week with those students. We have kind of a plan of 15 to 18 kids per room. Some of these rooms are a little bit bigger, and they allow for a few more students. Some of them are a little smaller, it's a little tighter, but we do want to try to maintain, you know, that six-foot distance so people feel safe, students feel comfortable, teachers feel comfortable, and of course, parents feel comfortable. So those teachers would be, I guess, we've been, in paper, we've been calling them a homeroom pod. So they would have those kids, and those would be the only kids that they would be with all day long, and this is in their elementary buildings. And then during that B-week, when those even-grade kids are home, the odd-grade kids are in school. So 1, 3, and 5 would then be in school. So what we're doing here is mitigating, you know, the risk of transmission by having only half of the kids in the building at a time. Each one of our elementary schools is a little bit different, and they're set up slightly differently, so there would be some flexibility with teachers and how they're going to deliver their lessons. Currently, the K-3 teachers all teach everything, and they certainly could continue to do that. If they wanted to collaborate on a lesson, then they certainly could do that as well, but they would be doing that virtually. So from their very own classroom, they could record themselves and then pass it on next door. They could Zoom with the group across the hall. There would be a lot of flexibility there. In our four or five classes where they are departmentalized, that's exactly what they would do. The kids would stay with their homeroom pod teacher, and if you're the science teacher, you're going to teach science, and you're going to teach it virtually to the kids across the hall or down the hall. They are not actually going to come to you. But those would be kids who you're all responsible for sort of touching base with during that off week. So that's what we're looking at for elementary. Similar plan for middle school, even week and odd week or AB, but this time, we're bringing in a little bit of everybody. The middle school currently has three teams in each grade level. We have created a fourth team, and what we're going to do is on A-week, bring in teams 1 and 2, B-week, bring in teams 3 and 4. And so we're just adjusting the numbers and having the same kind of thing. Half the building, there'll be about 500 kids in the building at any one time. Kids won't be moving in the hallways. Teachers will be either moving, depending on what they need to do, and/or delivering lessons virtually down the hall or from upstairs, and they're just going to keep continuing with that whole team concept there.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Rysland.
Sure.
Onto the Bulldog Digital Academy, which I'll speak to. Students, you know, these are Garfield Heights City School students, they have to be enrolled with us to be in it. They're able to enroll through the district's website. We're asking for a commitment for at least a semester from the families for planning purposes because we do have to staff the academy. The program will be coordinated by a licensed school administrator. The teachers are our teachers. There'll be employees of Garfield Heights City Schools full-time, and it could be a teaching assignment for them. Additionally, there may be some grade levels that only have one or two students, and what we're doing is we're looking at different platforms to use for for those students to access education. So for example, if you only have like two first-grade students, it would be difficult to assign a teacher maybe to those students, so you have an online program for them. You know, and there's various ones that we're looking at. All the students will be able to participate in co-curricular activities, such as clubs or sports if they so choose and are willing to come in for those sports. Again, we're looking at an online learning service. I know that that sounds vague, but it's purposefully vague because we don't want to pigeonhole ourselves into one service. We may be using multiple services. Grading will be similar to in-person learning with letter grades being used based on board policy. Assessments including benchmarking testing, as Mrs. Rysland said, will have to be worked out. We're working with NWEA, and we're not quite certain where the state is going to go with their online assessments. They have not gotten that far yet, excuse me, with their assessments. So, for example, that's something that, you know, it's always been in-person due to security measures. For family support, we want to have a district guidance counselor, a social worker as part of their duties assigned to the Digital Academy. Again, utilizing the Family Engagement Coordinator would be, is going to be important. And the district's Diversity and Equity Consultant, we're with teachers and administrators to ensure that all students' needs are being met in terms of access equity and diversity issues and special education issues. This academy, as I see it, as I said, I think may outlive the pandemic. I think that this is something that's going to be something trending in public education as an option for students. So we think that that's going to be a very good thing for our students moving forward. Additionally, in the plan, just to point out to the board, at the end of the plan, the last appendix are some documents that were drafted by the board's legal counsel for employees and for students in terms of, first of all, reporting to work for employees, and then guidance for employees and students to test positive for COVID. And we will, we will be getting those out on our website as we get closer to school. The biggest determination for all of it is that we work very closely with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health to minimize and mitigate if there is an exposure, to see who has to quarantine, who has to stay home, if it has to be a whole building, if it has to be a classroom. But you have to do that very closely. Also, you know, these things are part of the safety and sanitation plan that Mr. Sluka is working on as well, and I'm going to have him speak to that in a second. You know, cleaning and disinfecting protocols are in there that, you know, have to do with, you know, if you can wait 24 hours, you do that before you disinfect if there is someone with a positive test. You try to, you know, make sure you have airflow going into the area where the infected person was, and consult, consult, consult with the local Board of Health because they will help you through mitigation. And the other thing you want to do, because we're an educational institution, is try to ensure the continuity of education through our digital platforms with the students who may have to face a quarantine. Generally, it's very dependent on exposure and length of exposure and things like that. Sometimes the quarantine's only lasted a day or two. Sometimes the county Board of Health will let folks come back to their work or school place. The principals are working on building specific safety and sanitation plans as well. Al, if I could throw it to you real quick to kind of talk about the safety and sanitation pieces, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chris. First things first, what we've been looking at and we think is a good thing is we are, the first thing we're putting in place is thermal imaging in all our buildings. What that means is that's a student and staff member enters the building, they will be standing in a one spot, a thermal image will come up. There'll be a TV above them. There will be no sound, it'll be blinking, whether they exceed the tolerable limits for their temperature, or if they're not, then they proceed on the classroom, and if they do, then we will kind of ask them to step to the side. We will double-check them with a gun, the non-touch gun, and if it's, if it still registers high.
Excuse me, Mr. Sluka, that's a thermometer, just so everybody knows.
Yeah. Yeah, that's kind of like, yeah, the whatever, I can't, the name escapes me what they call it, but thermal gun, and if they still register, we will pull them out. We will have a dedicated room for them to be in and quarantine until their parent comes and gets them. The second thing we're going to do is we're going to, it's called ionization. We are going to have ionization units in all of our air handlers. It has been proven to kill COVID versus the IV lights that it will last longer. They're kind of more, as far as a maintenance item, they last longer. And what this does is it will, as the air circulates over these ionizations units, it will kill the COVID as we circulate through. The idea is, once the weather turns, we were going to try to have fresh air come in during the warmer air and have windows open, but once the once the weather turns, at least this will be pumping fresh air through it and not recycling air that's already in the building. So we'll have those units up and running. On top of that, we will have extra units that will be plugged in to the actual rooms that we have pull-out cases in, so we're going to have an extra unit in there. So it'll be cleaning that air if a student is in that room being quarantined or even a staff member until they can get them out. So that's the, that's the goal. We, so we're going to have extra, like, they're called room units for those rooms. We will have air units we're looking at for the weight room, a separate unit in the weight room as we have more students in that room, that kind of just an extra thing. As far as cleaning, we have purchased backpack sprayers, mist sprayers for all the rooms, and the chemical is, the idea is if they go around to each room and spray it down, it will kill any infectious disease within 10 minutes in a drying agent. It is a safe for the surfaces. It's not safe for paper, obviously, but for anything else, after 10 minutes, you can eat off it. So we will be going around and spraying those rooms every day. At the end of the day, that's part of the housekeeping staff. We're also looking into possibly, depending on what the schedule looks like, but I like the idea of hiring staff members that just walk around and constantly are cleaning the high-touch areas in the bathrooms after every class and just spraying them down and wiping down door handles and high-touch areas, we're looking at that. As far as the buildings themselves, I know that the principals are going to be looking at safely doing their buildings. Once we come up with a class size, we were going to be going to every classroom and marking on the floor where every guest will be, and if there's, and how many desks were put down, if there's any extra desk in that classroom, obviously, they will be pulled out and stored in a separate area. As far as the office space, we will be doing plexiglass for all of the secretaries that have to meet with the public. So we will have a plexi and students, so there'll be a plexiglass shield in between, so the secretaries will be behind plexiglass when meeting with students or parents or anybody else that needs to come into their building. So we'll be walking around and identifying those areas. We will also be identifying traffic patterns for students, and on the floor, we will also be traffic patterns outside as we enter the buildings and looking at that for a safety reason. Also, the idea is, and maybe some of the high areas where kids like to congregate, especially some of the offices, we were thinking about pulling out like all the furniture so nobody can just sit down and start talking. They're in, do their business. Out the door they go, there's nowhere to sit, there's nowhere to mingle, you just, you go in there. Along with that, as far as the Along with that, as far as the buses, I was just on a seminar last week with, with bus safety and the recommendations from the Department of Health. Um, what they're recommending is, uh, one student per seat unless you're a family member, plexiglass between the drivers. They also were saying that something of whether you want to do the, um, temperature readings at the bus stops. It'd be a little hard to do, determining, um, that sort of thing. If we have the thermal imaging at the schools, we've not discussed this amongst the COVID task force. It's a lot of work for a driver to maintain a bus and then also have the thermal image every kid that comes on. On top of maintaining a schedule of getting students to school. So we're hoping that with the pre- or proaction of parents. That they will be taking the students' temperature at home before they even get to the bus stop. As far as monitoring the bus stop, once again, we're gonna encourage parents to either be at the bus stop or tell their students about social distancing. It's gonna be hard for us to monitor bus stops prior to the buses getting there. Um, we will have, uh, face masks on the bus for students, we will have face masks readily available for students who do not have masks coming into school. Um, the big thing is, originally I thought we were gonna put, um. Hand sanitizers in high-traffic areas, but in everything that I'm reading and hearing about, we might, uh. We're gonna be required to put them in every classroom, so I'm looking to buy sanitizing stations for every classroom and, uh, go from there. We've already purchased sanitizer, we've already purchased face mask, we'll be purchasing more. We also looked at purchasing, um, face shields for all of our teachers. As far as, uh, one of the big things is can you teach through a mask or can the students read your lips? So we'll be purchasing masks for teachers and face shields for teachers and staff members. So though, they will have the choice of one or the other or even wearing both if they like to, but we will have that ready to go for them. As far as food service, K through eight, the idea is serving both breakfast and lunch in the classroom. No sit-down in the cafeteria. And we have the carts that we're doing, the breakfast program, we'll do the same thing for the food service. Each class will be self-contained and they will come to the cart, get their lunch, get their breakfast, go back to the classroom and then the next. So, um, the idea is if there's an outbreak in the, in a classroom, we could self-contain to that classroom. High school, little bit different issue, we won't know until we kind of finalize what the high school is gonna look like. And how we're gonna do, uh, food service at the high school, so. Um, basically, as far as like the route, the bus routes and how many we can transport. Until we get a final, uh, decision of how many per class, how many are coming to school each day. We will develop the routes. I do have to say that we are, um, every place that I've been talking to and everyone has going out to the legal limits. For transportation to the two-mile limit to cut down on the number of riders. Only because we will not be able to transport, even if we're doing one per bus, we will not be able to transport everybody, um. Closer in than, uh, uh, the two-mile limit for right now. On top of, and I'm not sure how it's gonna affect us, but on top of, I just got a directive from Ohio Department of Education. Saying that school districts are required to transport to charter and non-public schools. In the past, we've been getting away with payment in lieu of, but all the public schools have now instructed their parents to demand transportation. Rather than get payment in lieu of. So we're expecting an onslaught of charter and non-public schools demanding transportation and how we're gonna do that on top of. Everything else that we need to transport and, and the timeframe, so that's gonna be, um, we're just waiting to see who does that and where we have to go. Um, so that's basically the plan for right now, we're just finalizing some of the things and once we get a definite plan in place, then we'll be able to implement. Um, Mr. Palmer and I will be walking every building and looking at every classroom, every office space. And, and touching base to principals to have a, uh, a, a plan in place for that building to maintain social distancing. And ensure the, uh, safety of the students and especially our teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Saluka. Um, I do want to point out as well, um, I guess further point out the equity piece of this. Uh, speaking with, uh, Yolanda Hamilton, uh, we're gonna, um, form. You, you know, and I understand where we are with, you know, planning a lot of things, but we believe equity is gonna be very important in terms of, uh, uh. As we go through and develop these plans and respond to challenges from families. Uh, so we will, will be forming an equity task force that will be, excuse me, task force that will be separate from, uh, the COVID task force and. Uh, we would certainly appreciate a, a, a board member, uh, uh, being on that, uh, task force with us as we formulate it. Um, uh, you know, to plan for the, um, for the upcoming school year. With that, um, I'm gonna go ahead and turn, turn it back over to Mr. Jubey.
Yes, I got a question for Mr. Saluka. Where did that directive come from that you had just mentioned about the voucher schools and non-public schools are gonna demand transportation?
Uh, well, I heard from some of the schools, uh, saying that they are, uh, telling their parents for the non-publics. As far as that directive, that was Paulo D. Maria, Superintendent of Schools for the Ohio Department of Education. Reiterating the transportation rules for charter and non-public, so he must be getting a lot of feedback from, from those schools.
Okay, and we will put our students ahead of them as far as the transportation, getting our school, our students to school.
A- absolutely, but we will be required to transport them. What was probably gonna end up happening is we're gonna have to be working with the charter and non-public schools. To look at times of getting their students there, um, I don't want to do this, but maybe we're gonna have to be picking up charter and non-publics. A whole lot earlier than our students, so maybe they're gonna have a six o'clock and pick up and a five o'clock drop-off. And, and just get picked up after our runs and see how that works out.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just about this topic. So when the parents call in with the concern or with the ask, can we help transport? Do we, can we have a plan to kind of grill them back into Garfield?
Oh, we can, absolutely. I, I, I guess the, the, the issue is Thomas is that. Yeah, they're gonna have to work around our schedule and so will the schools. I, I, I wholeheartedly, but the, the hard part is, is the Ed Choice and the, the vouchers and all these schools that are saying that. You know, come to our school for the education, especially Ed Choice non-publics. I'm not sure we're gonna, we have a hard time getting them back. I'd love to get you, like you say, the charter school's back and we, we're doing a great job of trying to tell. We have a better system, so I don't know. Yeah, we have a great new program, absolutely. So I, I think the issue is, is gonna be in more of the non-publics that we've been asked, uh. They've been, the Ed Choice students about getting transportation.
Being, being on, uh, on some of these calls with Mr. Saluka, one thing I will say, Ms. Thomas, is that. Us, a lot of the times it's not the parents that, that are, that are forcing the issue. It's the actual charter company. So, so it, it becomes kind of a different issue for us.
And, and I guess the, the other issue is, is if we are required, and I hate to say this, if we are required to do that. I'm not sure to make all our routes, especially, you know, whether we can social distance on buses. To meet all the requirements of the transportation that the Ohio Department of Education is, uh, mandating right now. But we'll do it, we'll do our best to, to do that. But absolutely, our students will take priority with the, uh. With, um, the way the class schedules are going and try to get them on time.
Leanne, I have a question for you. Would you said the, uh, A week and B week? So I'm just concerned with the A week first, it'd be K two and four. They'll be in school Monday and Tuesday, Wednesday they'll be online and Thursday and Friday they'll be in school?
No, they'll be, um, in school all week, so five days.
Okay.
And then they would be home the ne- the five days in B week and then they would be coming back. So it would just be alternating between an A week and a B week every other.
So it's not the two-one-two, this is the.
No, it is not.
Gotcha.
Correct.
And is, is that the plan that you prefer or you think is best for our students for learning?
Personally, yes, I like that. I think that the five days builds momentum. Um, it gives. I think it gives the kids an opportunity to establish daily routines. And keeping something going for like, I know it's, it's a small chunk of time, but it's, it's better than just a two-day. Um, it also allows us an opportunity to build relationships and that's something that, you know, our district is very big on, building relationships. And I feel like last year, we were in a place that we at least went out in the fourth quarter and our teachers and our kids already knew each other very well. Um, coming into new classes online is gonna be tough. And I think if we can have that opportunity for a nice chunk of time together, we can build relationships with teachers and students. We also can let kids build relationships, cause we know from, there's a lot of research that kids need to learn from peers. They need that social interaction, they need that ability to collaborate and work together. Obviously, there's, there's some, you know, s- distance and some safety things that we need to consider right now. But just being in a room with each other, hearing each other's opinions and ideas. And creating that kind of, you know, collaborative atmosphere, I think would be really helpful in a five-day. As we talked about over the last few months, it is not perfect. There are no perfect scenarios in this. Uh, I think that this is a nice, it's a nice balance. It keeps people on a routine, it's a, it's tough for parents, I understand that. Um, but to say like it's a five-day here in school and then a five-day home for every other week for, um, you know. Babysitter or daycare purposes, I feel like that might be able to be more accommodating if you're going to a facility. They operate on weeks typically. Um, it gives our kids, you know, just that opportunity to, to work together. To build relationships. It allows us time for PBIS. That's another very, very big initiative in our district is building that, that, that framework and implementing it. And it would be really hard to sort of get that going. It, it would take the whole first quarter. If kids were just coming in for two days here and two days and two days, it would take so long to get through all of that. So I think that, I mean, personally, just seeing where we are in each one of these buildings and having the ability to. You know, kind of look at things from an outside and like kind of the overarching, I do think that this is the best case scenario. Um. But, you know, again, it's not perfect. There are no perfect scenarios.
Thank you.
Sure.
I also.
Any other questions?
I do have a couple of questions and this, my first one, uh, piggybacks on, piggybacks on the A and B schedule. Will there be, will there be any consideration for a family that has multiple children? And they are even in odd, so that the family can have all of their children. For instance, in childcare or there's a provider or they have flexibility in their job. So that the students are all home at the same time or at a, off-school at the same time.
Mm-hmm. So we have been going back and forth with this and how we could drill down this fire in our planning to, to get down to the family level. Um, I think that in any scenario, it's really hard. If we do, even if we do like the two days and the two days, there's gonna have to be some breakdown of even in odd grades. We, um, started to just take a look at William Foster and I, um, asked the principal just to ru- give me a quick. You know, like run of numbers and she'd already started taking a look at some of them. And there were like 690 kids and 500 and some families. And we were like, oh, boy, like we didn't think it was gonna be such a large undertaking. Um, at this point, I don't know that we can drill down that far. I wish I could say, yes, everyone will be accommodated. Um, we've looked at other ways of matching kids up, first grading, you know. But what happens is like if we just said, we'll do it alphabetically, um, by last name. Because then we might be able to gather family groups up that way. Um, what happens is we run into scenarios where we don't have enough kids to build a whole classroom. Or we have too many kids in, um, certain grade levels and then we run into a teacher problem and we don't have the personnel to staff it that way. So then it takes us back to grade levels, um. I wa- I want to and we'll keep looking at that, but at this point, no, we don't have anything on paper. That is quite working out the way we'd like it to.
Malat, do you mind if I ask the question, a piggyback off of, um, Leanne's response? Um, have we possibly, as far as, um, the model that Malat, um. Proposed, have we actually looked at, um, possibly changing the building structures like K two? Three, four, five, six building structures, so that that will be a little more feasible. And, um, having all grades in session to accommodate, um. Families, cause that's, that's gonna be a major community issue, um, trying to navigate. Um, if your child is, doesn't A, B and that's gonna be a major community issue. And so as we're sitting here thinking, have we considered possibly changing our building structures to accommodate something like that?
We did, and that was in fact, one of our very first ideas. And again, it comes down to staffing and personnel. We do not have the people to cover the buildings. Um, you know, right now, in that scenario, we have four encore teachers in each one of the elementary buildings. So we have music and art and they, those four people, P E. They deal with every kid in the building. So if we divide and conquer those buildings or divvy them up. We now have 12 people who have to cover all these different buildings and all these different students. So how, like, do we say then, we just give music to Elmwood and Elmwood is K and one? And then we, they don't get to have arts, they don't get to have P E. We tried to spread people all out. And then it doesn't allow for a complete day and then the kids don't have enough courses to take. And then there's not enough time to get plan and lunch periods out of the day, because that's how you get a plan in a lunch period for the teacher, for the classroom teacher. Is sticking them in music and art.
I'm missing something, so aren't those encore teachers at every building already? Wouldn't they just stay at the buildings they're at?
But if we were to spread them out across different buildings with different grade levels, we have to pro- provide them with travel time. And getting them to and from the buildings and deciding who do they reach? Because now they're not just in their building dealing with their 500 kids, they have to go to all the other buildings and deal with maybe, you know, like. They're gonna look at whole grade levels. So there may be kids who don't get certain things and it doesn't provide the time. For the, in the day, like for lunches and.
I'm just not understanding, I'm sorry, cause I thought it was like, encore is, um, music, art, gym, right? So there's a music, art and gym teacher at Elmwood, there's a music, art and gym teacher at William Foster. There's a music, art and gym teacher and make-believe, correct? So if Elmwood turned to K two, that music, art and gym teacher would be that same teacher there and would not need to travel. If William Foster turned to three, four.
Oh, you wanna chunk it just by elementary.
That's just what I was asking, have we thought about restructuring the school buildings to kind of accommodate that model? If you guys haven't, that's fine, but that's what I'm saying, um, that could possibly better accommodate the model that Ms. Tucker recommended. I'm sorry if I didn't explain.
No, I'm sorry, cause I was thinking about our initial plan where we were putting kids in every building across the district, all five buildings.
Yeah, no, I'm just.
Didn't have the, the people for. Okay, so no.
Yeah, I'm just talking K.
About that. We did, take a look at that.
That's a good, that's a good point. Uh, one of the major contingencies, uh, with any of our plans is the, uh, 40-minute plan and 40-minute lunch. Uh, for the teachers. Uh, and, uh, that, that, um, has, has, uh. Hasn't driven the planning, but it certainly is a consideration we've made in each of the plans, but that, that's, that, that, Ms. Daniels and Ms. Tucker, that's a good, that's a good point. We could, we will, we'll look at that, that piece. Maybe that'll help us, uh, structure things so we can, maybe not though. Just to, you know, the devil's always in the details with these things, so.
And then my, um, my second question was in regards to the, um, Bulldog, the Digital Bulldog Academy. Um, you had indicated, for instance, if we had two or three first graders, it wouldn't be enough to have a. Uh, an instructor, a teacher for that grade, so they would do online? Am I hearing that correctly? So that those students, if it's a smaller number, would not get the one-on-one. Well, group instruction from a, an instructor?
They wouldn't, they wouldn't, they wouldn't, it's possible they wouldn't get it from a Garfield Heights City Schools teacher. There are programs out there that have licensed educators that meet with kids every single day. But, um, it would be, um, logistically impossible. Pot, possibly logistically impossible, if that makes any sense, uh, to pull one instructor for two children. Whereas, um, there are organizations out there that will provide instructors, uh, uh, you know, for, for that. Uh, uh, for that small group and, and they are licensed teachers. Um, but it would be very challenging for us if we had, uh, you know, one or two children, uh, that we wanna serve and that we wanna, want them to have that option, uh, uh, to have, uh, uh, necessarily Garfield Heights.
Okay, so the students would have a, an instructor. It just may be through, um, a platform or a platform that we purchase.
That, that is correct.
Thank you.
Um, I have a few questions. Um, so with the week on and week off model, how do the teachers work with that? So when the kids are a week at home, do they have a different teacher? So are there two teachers per classroom or?
No, they're just gonna have their regular classroom teacher. So they're gonna be assigned to their homeroom pod. And so I'm say, I'm the second grade teacher and I have my fifteen or sixteen kids in my room. I'm gonna teach them all day long. And, um, you know, without my normal typical lessons, everything throughout the day. And then when we're in our off week, I'm gonna be responsible for reaching out to those kids as well. And we would have some whole group things, but then at this point, I would be thinking to myself going, you know, last week Sammy and Michael did not know how to, you know, work on this particular assignment. I'm gonna set up a small group Zoom. We're gonna work through this. And then maybe I'm gonna reteach a couple of things and just work with Sammy and Michael on something. And then I'm gonna have some parent opportunities to, um, have them come online and say, this is what we're doing this week. In case, um, you know, you need to know how to access Google Classroom. We're gonna look at this. We read this article together and wanted you to know. You can have the opportunity to, you know, talk with your kids about A B C, cause this is what we talked about in class. I think that there's, um, a lot of the stuff I'm reading about curriculum and just like teacher concerns. Obviously, across the country, we're, we're very concerned about the deficiencies that the kids are gonna come in with. Cause there's already a summer slide and now they're calling it the COVID slide. So it all compounds one another and makes it, you know, kind of difficult. So I really wanna spend time supporting the kids where they are. And working with them in small groups and differentiation and helping them kind of grow. I don't want this to be a year that is just stagnant. I am not, I'm, I'm not silly and deluding myself. I know that this is, you know, gonna take a few years for us to get out of. I get that. But I also don't just want kids to sort of keep their place in line. I want them to learn and move forward this year. And I feel like having those opportunities to work online, I mean, even it was just a couple of days. It gives teachers that opportunity to really get down and dig deep with small groups and individual kids. And in the classroom, I don't know that that's going to be possible. Um, regardless of how much time, I don't know that teachers are gonna be able to sit side by side with students. I don't know how, you know, how comfortable that's gonna be for kids, parents and teachers. So we also need to consider that, the health and safety of everyone. But we need to have opportunities to differentiate. And this is gonna sound crazy, but the small groups, you know, like fifteen kids in a class can sometimes be hard to have your small groups. Like everyone wants small classes. And then you have small classes and you're like, this is crazy. And it, you know, I used to teach a long time ago. But I had a class I can remember, nine kids, and I hated it. You'd think it was your dream class. But I really didn't care for it because you couldn't do anything. You couldn't break them up. You couldn't have debates. You couldn't do all the things that you were used to doing. So everything is a little bit different and everything is shifting. So I really think that that online time is gonna be very important.
Can I chime in one thing too? One of the guidance that's said about the classrooms and the setups is reading circles and things that we would normally do in a classroom have to be eliminated. So that, that allows the teachers and that, that off week to meet those kids' needs. And as well as also doing PBIS lessons and basically kind of front-loading things on the week. So that when they're at home, they're able to provide them the materials that they needed in going forward as well. But a lot of the things that, you know, the guidance that we continue to see is about setting up classrooms and having like, you know, we, we have like, especially in the elementary level, all these like reading corners or kidney tables. You cannot have that.
No.
So, so it's gotta be back to where a teacher's desk in the front and fifteen desks row down, down the aisle going forward from there. I mean, that's really kind of the guidance. And then, uh, again, as Mrs. Riesel was just saying, that individualized, uh, attention that some of our students need. We won't be able to necessarily provide it when we see them in person, but the following week when they're at home, we're able to do that.
So one teacher, so one teacher will not have a week A and a week B class. She follows her same fifteen stu- she or he follows that same fifteen students, whether they're in the building or at home.
You got it.
And, and if I could chime in, uh, Mrs. Riesel and Ms. Thomas, uh, you know, that's a consideration. Te- teachers are, this is, this is, is a complete change and then to double up their, their load, their class load would be ve- very difficult.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
No, no. Um, and, uh, to that point, we, uh, we have, uh, uh, we've had an initial meeting with the Garfield Heights Teachers Association and, um, I, I maybe, uh, last week. And then we're having another one about these plans, uh, um, you know, in terms of, in terms of their, their, their input. Any other questions? Al, is anybody chiming in?
I'm sorry, and I shot. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Ashley, were you done? I did have a follow-up to Ashley's question.
Go ahead. My other one should be like short answers, but go ahead.
Okay. Um, Leanne, just a quick question about the hi- like the hybrid model. Um, first question I have is do it normally take two weeks in the classroom to like cover a standard? Are we modifying how we reach the standards now? Like what is the expectation from Ohio Department of Education as it relates to us meeting educational standards now?
So the hybrid model, um, does take a little bit longer to master standards. Uh, anything online is a little bit slower. There's a learning curve, obviously, for just the online component. But it does take a little bit more time to get through everything. And I think kids, teachers and parents probably all recognize that in the spring. Um, I know I did. And I think that in terms of mastering standards, it's all over the place. Certain, because some standards are super beefy and require many, many things to complete and some are just one simple task. And so, um, in terms of mastering standards, I think that that's, you know, it's dependent on what you're doing, where you're at, and of course, the different content and courses that you're teaching. But one of the things we will absolutely have to address is the scope and sequence and the assessment calendar. Because we've already agreed to those things. You know, like, we've already been working on them. And those are not, those are not things that you decide and it's done forever. Every year you have to go back to the drawing table and look at that and address it and adjust it. So these things are ever-evolving, but we've sort of already kind of had our way for this year, kind of set. And so now we are gonna have to address those things. So if we do move forward with a five day on, five day off, um, we will have to address that scope and sequence. And the teachers are gonna have to T V T and work together. And what we'll have to do is we first need to start with our gap analysis, which is gonna be for us to decide what do we not get to in the spring. So all the teachers are gonna start putting together a document that says, I did, I sort of taught this online in the spring, but I wouldn't say it was mastered. And then these are the things we didn't get to. And so we're gonna look at that analysis and say, okay, so moving from third to fourth grade, fourth to fifth and all the way through, what do we need to start with? So we could.
Fourth quarter.
Yeah.
Have to do no analysis for that fourth quarter.
And so I think, you know, there's, we're gonna have to build that in. And what the teachers will do is they'll spiral that content. And so they'll think about, here's where we need to be. Here's where my kids maybe usually are in the first day of school. And then somewhere in the middle here is where we kind of need to start. And we'll start pulling everyone up with us and then moving forward together. But absolutely, those are huge considerations. And, um, with the, you know, if we move forward with the calendar approval and we don't have the T V T Thursdays, I know that's gonna be a little bit hard. But, um, people will, they'll adjust and they'll make the right professional decisions, because we always do.
I, I, so as a parent, I have to say my expectation was that during the hybrid times, the off, online, that the kids will be expected to be on at the same time as school and keep the same structure as their regular school day. That's not translating to me as you guys are explaining it. So can you please, um, explain that a little bit better? It seems like it's gonna look more like the spring, just a little more modified and together. And my expectation as a parent, that the off time was gonna mirror school time. It was just gonna be online. So I need some translation for that, if you have it.
Sure. So the reason that we decided that to go with that idea of like support week as opposed to just straight up regular school schedule is that they may not have the opportunity to differentiate and do those small group instructions in the classroom. And this being online time could allow them those really kind of small, intense remediation time. There will be large group. They absolutely need to have large group. And there will be opportunities, like I said, for lots of FaceTime, parent talk. Um, you know, individual kid time, tutoring. There's gonna be lots of FaceTime. But it is not gonna be typical school day, you know, eight to two thirty. It could be, but I would be that kids would fall behind and struggle because there wouldn't be opportunities for that remediation.
But couldn't that be fitting in just like a regular, everyday, go-to-school schedule that end? I mean, I'm really feeling like they need that consistency. Um, it's not off time. I mean, we're in a full.
No, it's not off time.
And that's gonna be treated as that, that's not, I mean, I don't know if this is the place for that opinion. But it's just, it's, it's, um, my expectation is for them to be structured learning. And if they need some remedial or pullout or whatever else may be needed, that that's built into like the regular school day like it normally is, um, if they were in school, um, every day. I'm just not seeing this. This model's not translating, um, for me. Um, what my, what I was expecting, just, you know.
I think, uh, one thing I will say is the expectations for the students is that they, it, it may not be a, a traditional model in terms of, um, what they're receiving, uh, uh, you know, when they're in person. But I think, you know, in, 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 in my mind and, uh, you know, as a superintendent, my expectation is that children are in school virtually throughout the school day. Now, the activities may look a little different, uh, in terms of, okay, well, I'm working with, um, you know, Leanne and Sean and, and, and Cherry, uh, in this small group while you guys work on this, you know, piece in Google Classroom, right? But they're all, they're, they're, they're online throughout.
During the school day.
Yes, during the school day, during the school hours. Cause, uh, first of all, they have to be. Because we, we have to make sure that we, we meet hours of instruction in a very base level, okay? Secondly, we wanna make sure that we're, 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 we're really, uh, uh, leveraging those opportunities for, for the gaps that do exist. Uh, uh, even without a gap analysis, we know that, that it exists because we pivoted so quickly in the spring. So I think that, you know, the expectation of the students, uh, uh, and the teachers is that this is not, that, that, that this is school time and we, we need to be engaged during school time and school hours. Uh, where, you know, but it, it does provide you an opportunity to do those small group types of things and things differently. I hope Mrs. Riesel, I did not step, steal your thunder or step on anything there.
I'm sorry. I just have to be, you know, I just need some clarity. Because, um, you know, I, I don't, my expectation is my children will be, um, receiving the same level of education on their off time as they're, they're doing on their on time. So the expectation is it's consistent. And, um, I guess we can probably discuss this more later, just will teachers actually have it, you know, be maintaining the same schedule? Like math instruction and then at some point, this is pullout time. If you don't need it, you, just like you said, working in Google Classroom. Not the schedule changing every day because, you know, I, I don't. And kids having flexibility, like, I don't feel like this model should provide flexibility because we've decided we're going back to school full-fledged. So, uh, you know, I just don't want to, I just wanna make sure that there's, um, you know, it's, it's clear that it's not off time.
Right. And, and remember what we just said, like Mr. Patton said, you know, there are things that we do in the classroom every day that we're not going to be able to do. So the digital platform, I, 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 like in the hybrid model, will allow us the opportunity to do that. Uh, small group instruction, differentiation, um, you know, I, 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 walking through and observing classrooms this year, you know, you see a situation where a teacher has a station, right? And then, you know, the teacher's working on, uh, a student, pulling in students for a small, uh, benchmarking assessments. And then the, the students are working in small groups on an assignment. You're able to do that virtually. Whereas in person, we're probably not going to be able to do that type of model because folks are not gonna be able to sit very closely together.
Will our tutors be virtual too? The two, the like, the, I don't know who those people are to be in the hallway, reading with the kids and working with the kids in K five, I know. Will we be still, yeah, will we still be having those and will they be available virtually?
Um, we haven't decided about the tutors yet. That's always something that we decide once we get back in school and we see where everyone is. We don't usually hire tutors until like September-ish.
Okay, yeah, that was one of the questions I had too. Like, are we looking into any kind of special services to bring into the districts for, for our students who will struggle with any kind of hybrid model?
In, in term, in terms of, uh, what type of, what type of service?
Um, I mean, a tutoring service or an extra enrichment service? Or like, I know, like we, some, something, cause I know that some of our students, especially our, our younger students are going to struggle coming to school for a week, whether they have that continuity through that week and then going back home and coming back, like, they are going to struggle. So like, what are we gonna do to help them get on board and on track with this new routine?
Well, I think that, 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 first of all, like your first, you know, one of the models that we have to leverage that we use, uh, is, is the, first of all, an expectation model in terms of PBIS. Uh, uh, and how that look, uh, PBIS could look completely different, uh, in terms of how, how we, how we, uh, have expectations for students. Uh, the second thing we have to leverage is the communication piece on those digital, digital online weeks. I, I, I am going to try to coach everyone and everyone listening to call this the digital or online week. It is not an off week. So, so we have, I mean, I think that's appropriate to, please call it that, you know? Because if we start saying that, that type of thing, it's not, not, not appropriate. Um, where, where you also leverage, I, I, I think, and you find out, uh, through, through, and you work it up through the teachers, Ms. Thomas, uh, to see who's struggling, uh, an extra service, we, 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 we actually have, as Mrs. Riesel said, through Title One funding, we're able to bring in licensed teachers. So what we wanna do is try to figure out where, where kids are, uh, where we have to meet them. And then, then we can go through a process of getting those folks in place, which is what we do in a normal year. And it's probably appropriate to do it this time, the same kind of way, because we wanna see where the kids are, uh, uh, first. Because we, you know, you call it a gap analysis, uh, you know, you also have the map, map assessment. So you do, you know, you do the fall benchmarking and, uh, you see where kids are and you meet them where they are. Um, the second piece that I'm, I'm concerned about, Ms. Thomas, quite frankly, is the soc- social emotional piece, uh, uh, that, 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 where, where the, where the kids are coming back and what types of things we're gonna have to, uh, uh, o- offer them. That ties in with PBIS. It ties in, um, uh, uh, you know, it ties in with, uh, the, our social workers and guidance counselors. Uh, it also ties in with outside agencies that we, we do have in, uh, in, in the district. And how we, how we use counselors from outside agencies to help students. Um, you know, tho- those are all things that need to be under consideration. Uh, uh, in, um, it, it's not, i- it's not something you can't plan for. You plan for it. But you also have to get a gauge of where the students are as they come back to try to help them. to try to help them where 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 so we can meet them where they're at, where they are, excuse me. Any other questions?
I have a number of questions, a lot were already answered, so I can pass through them, but I do have a number of questions in different categories. The first is with the hybrid model, with the remote model. Actually, with the remote model that we're planning, how many students have signed up so far? How are we advertising this? Which teachers will be in the instructors for this and will the school administrator have a background in online learning?
All good questions, uh first of all, um a- as we had, we we had launched a uh a um a uh uh
Registration form.
I think as of today, we had a hundred and eleven folks uh that are that are interested in online only model. Uh they range uh from uh various grade levels. Uh teachers uh uh can be assigned uh based on enrollment purposes uh uh into that online model as an assignment, uh we worked with Eric Johnson on that. Uh but one of the considerations is that that there there are a number of teachers uh that either for their own, I I either due to a health issue or 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 another issue that uh they may not be able to return to work, those are gonna be dealt with on a case by case basis where they may be appropriate uh to teach online. Uh uh and so we'll we'll also have to look at that. Um the second piece, Mrs. Kitson, you asked, uh go ahead, again, again, could you repeat those? Lost my train of thought.
Well, are we advertising this?
We aren't advertising it, uh we just had the registration form. Uh as we said at the last board meeting, uh the board did want more input on the uh on the on the digital uh o- only platform, we wanted to give the board the opportunity uh to have that input. We do know that through our surveying uh in our in our talks with parents that there are a number of students that will refuse to come back uh uh for any number of reasons. Uh so a a a digital model is imperative uh to reach them where they're where they are. Uh uh so that's where we're where we are with it.
And that the school administrator that's in charge, is that going to be someone with a background in online education?
Well, th- there are, there are, there are those folks, uh I think that um I I'd like to say more about uh that particular piece uh with personnel and executive session.
Okay, um thank you, um I made a couple, I actually have a few questions, I'll just go through the list. Sanitation, um are we going to have, I know there's protocols, are we going to have documentation that all our employees were trained on our sanitation protocols and have them sign off? And is, and I know Mr. Sluk is developing a protocol now for even cleaning during the day within the classrooms, which I'm assuming is going to be have have to be done.
Uh first of all, I I I and I'll jump in when you can. Uh we are developing a sign off sheet, uh we're we're looking, we're working with legal counsel on that. Um and we're also gonna have to work with our our online training platform, Public School Works with which Mr. Patton can probably uh talk about.
Yes, I believe that they were working on a COVID um kind of uh understanding or class coursework that they have for the People Works that they have. So they were, they I did mention that when I talked to the our rep on that in the springtime, that they were working on something of that. Um the the other thing is that we do have to develop a safety plan that Mr. Hinkie kinda talked about and including some of those protocols that you have. Um also, if we are able to move our uh start date back, that allows us them some of that professional time for our teachers at the beginning of the year to review those procedures and policies with them as well.
Alright, thank you.
And then and then following up on that, once we have the uh coursework and class schedules and the time set uh students will be in their classroom, out of their classroom, we will work on a building cleaning checklist where they go around at certain times and if you, if every one class takes a bathroom break, we go in there, spray it down and clean it for the next class before they can go in there and take a classroom break and we'll those are probably gonna have to be set times and we're gonna have to make sure students are um do this in in different intervals to ensure that we can get those clean before the next group goes in there to be self-contained.
And and I'm gonna jump on that too, and that's one of the things that we've asked the principals when we met with them is also to work on building plans too. And so the building plans are being shared with us as well, so we can help support with them and make those necessary changes and intervals and add things, suggestions to them um as we kind of develop these plans going forward for these next few weeks.
And and Mrs. Kitson, it was, you know, it wasn't an article in the neighborhood news that they they approached us after the last board meeting, you know, about about our plans, so that wasn't an advertising uh uh effort by me by any means, they they but we did wanna respond to their questions.
Thank you, um next is face coverings and face shields. Uh are we going to do anything with our our dress code? Uh because I could see high school students possibly coming in with masks that, you know, it's freedom of speech. I think it's something we have to look at in our in policy committee. Um you had mentioned that PPE or the personal protective gear will be provided by the school, is this going to be a students given a mask every week or how's, or is this still being developed, how this is going to be?
Well, I I I guess the the approach was that we're hoping that students will bring masks with them. Um sometimes maybe if you have a mask at home and you have a certain one, you know, now it's the fashionable thing to do is wear these masks, we will have masks available every day if a student shows up and we mandate masks that we will have. If they don't have a mask, we will give them one, so we'll have enough masks a- available for every day if a student.
I think we do have to define whether we're, whether our
Absolutely.
Policy says we are providing or whether the students providing because
Right.
if we run out of masks, which potentially could happen with these outbreaks. Um if it's something, we can have PTA help make masks or whatever, I think that's something we probably should discuss and clarify. Um the other thing is.
Real quick, I I'm sorry, Mrs. Kitson, I just wanna jump in right there, we also believe that OSBA is going to give us some guidance for the mask protocol as well.
Great.
So for the policy, so that that way we can allow um us to give us the guidance where we need to go and then develop it through the policy committee, but we believe that they're going to give us the guidance from there, since they were part of the governor's mandates.
One thing that I did, I I did um send to the board was a draft board policy on face coverings.
Yeah, I haven't, yeah, I'll have to look.
So the 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 long and short of that, it was, it was, it was written by uh your legal counsel, Mr. Johnson, a draft uh that we need to run through Board Policy Committee, one good piece of flexibility in it though is, is that we can develop administrative guidelines and then put those through the student code of conduct. So for example, we do not want drug references, right, on masks and things of that nature. Uh so we have some mask protocols. The second thing that 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 particular uh 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 policy a- allows us flexibility on exemptions, okay, cuz we're gonna have exemptions for mask wearing, we have folks that have medical conditions where they cannot wear masks and maybe maybe have to have to be given a face shield or or some sort of a thing around their desk. Uh we have students with disabilities that may not be able to wear a mask. We have, we have, you know, there there's a number of exemptions that we're gonna have to go through.
Okay.
Um uh and then that that will have to be done through Board Policy Committee. And then uh administrative guidelines, our legal counsel is willing to uh look at those as well, uh which would be helpful, I I think.
I look, hey, Chris, I I like this uh what Eric Johnson did is use this policy for the face coverings. Cuz like you said, it doesn't allow you the flexibility to change on a moment's notice where the board has to change a policy. I believe we have to have two meetings, Al, to change a policy or to institute a new policy.
Yeah, two readings and then it's approved unless you waive the readings.
Right, so at any rate, he could do it.
Yeah. Whether it's on a policy or an administrative guideline or student handbook updates, as long as it's.
Well, when you read this, Chris, you'll see it's pretty.
Yeah, I just got it today and I work, so I didn't have.
And these masks, Mr. Hanky, will be school appropriate?
That that that's the, that's gotta be in the administrative guideline is that they have to be school appropriate, right? We have to, it's like any piece of clothing, it ha- it has to follow our our dress code. So whatever you may have printed on your your shirt or or whatever, it has to be, you know, it it uh follows board policy and also student code of conduct, um you know, uh while allowing for expression, you know, we wanna make sure that people can express themselves appropriately. Uh uh you know, but uh we also wanna make sure that there's no, you know, material distraction to the educational process, as we say.
Thank you, um next is regarding any illness that might happen at school. Right now, we have a health aide, do we need a registered nurse within the district or at the school level? Will we have a separate COVID clinic? Um to, you know, evaluate and monitor.
I apologize if I if I stepped stepped on what you were saying, Mrs. Kitson, um. What we will have is a separate court, we can, we we may not wanna call it this, but a separate room for students that have temperature issues, okay? Where they're waiting for parents, uh we will have a separate room uh for that. As far as needing a registered nurse at each building, that would be fantastic. Um is it needed?
I was concerned it was a mandate or something.
It is, it is, it is certainly not a mandate, and we worked through PSI to have one registered nurse and then trained health aides at each building. Um that is a, that's a fiscally responsible model, I think, it also will also be at, it will be materially as safe. Uh in in terms.
We have a a registered nurse within the district.
Yes, we do.
Oh, great, okay, that's fine then.
We we have, we have a third party vendor we use called PSI, used by many districts uh that provides us a registered nurse.
Um who's checking the checkpoint at the entrance, who's monitoring that, do you know?
That's a, that's a, that's a very great question, so we have a number of folks that we're gonna leverage to do that. Security folks, uh anybody can be trained on a thermometer. So we can easily train someone to put a no-touch thermometer to someone's head. Uh administrators, uh a- and also we are working to shift the health aides um uh uh hours cuz they come in after school starts now. Uh we want them to start before school starts, so they can help us. Um and also, um you know, beyond security, you know, we have administrators, so
Right.
we we think we we will have a number of people, and I believe, Mr. Sluk, we purchased the 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 no-touch thermometers for.
We've already purchased those for all the buildings.
For all the buildings, so uh that that's a a big, a big piece of PPE for secondary screening. And just so the public knows, uh uh you know, temperatures, you know, generally, we send children home for for temperatures that are over a hundred, hundred point four degrees right now is the is is seems to be the guidance, but you know, you don't want children with temperatures in school generally. Uh it usually means that there there's some sort, I'm not a doctor, but I know, Mrs. Kitson, actually, you can probably chime in on this, it usually means there's some sort of an infection or something, you know, going on, so we wanna make sure that um uh you know, it'll also help, this is really gonna help with flu season, right? So I mean, you have flu season, you know, I I I look at the numbers during flu season constantly every day and 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 there are some grades that get that get hit really tough on it, so this could help with the mitigation there.
That's true.
Mr. Hanky, how long do you anticipate every day to get these students through the checkpoint? Wrong world checkpoints, thermal checks?
I I would argue.
Bellyed in their classroom.
I would argue in the beginning, Mr. Jubey, it's going to take a half hour to forty-five minutes. I think after we get the protocol down, I I I'm hoping that we get it down to about fifteen minutes. I'm basing that off of the demonstrations I've seen, these ver- imaging cameras, uh they they've been deployed generally in in uh food processing plants. Uh and it's almost like people, they're about five feet apart, but they were just walking. Okay, now routines, PBIS again, uh teaching the children uh i- is gonna take some time. Um and the other thing I'm basing this off of is that a number of 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 districts, you know, of over the years deployed metal detectors uh through one checkpoint. And uh that type of, that type of situation, again, took longer at the beginning and they got it down to about fifteen minutes at a high school level. Um I would argue that sometimes at the at the at the younger grade, sometimes it can take a little longer cuz you know, you have, you gotta help the children.
Well, and and Mr. Jubey, in in following up on that question, I think if what we're hearing from the survey is a lot of parents will be bringing their students to school, so we could stagger them even staying in their car and then grabbing them as they go and just say, okay, next, and then you walk through it, then next, and then the depending on the bus uh arrival times, if we stagger them by even a couple minutes, um each bus will make sure we get one load through and then the next bus will arrive and go through and so you know, in the beginning, like you said.
And we're also, oh, I'm sorry, I I just wanted to note that we're we're looking at a significantly um half of the student population at arrival and dismissal, when we're accustomed to, you know.
Right, double that size for that building, yeah.
Yeah.
Correct, but I don't, you know, you don't wanna commit to any sort of numbers that may not work.
Yeah.
But I think, yeah, if, you know.
And one other thing is that this is something that when we talk to the principals about developing plans, again, we've mentioned that that we know that the thermal imaging's coming for them to start preparing and developing these protocols so that when students are coming in, like Mr. Sluk and Mr. Hinkie were just stating, so that we have these kind of measures in place, but then also sharing that out when we do our opening letters and so forth, so that once we have kind of all the the nuts and the bolts worked out, sharing it out to with the publics that they're aware as well.
And and if I could follow up on that, um I think uh it should be pointed out that staff is gonna be required to go through this thermal image too as they enter the building. So they're gonna need to get there a little earlier than the students.
I have a question about the thermal imager. Um you said it was a screen that indicates the temperature.
It's a TV, well, as you go through, there's a a a camera that points to just your face, you just stand there, it reads it, and then it just comes up on a TV screen above them, facing not to them. Facing the person, that's, it does, they don't know, no, they don't see it, it's the whoever's, you know, as they come in the door, they're watching from the other side. The student does not see the screen at all as they enter.
Yeah, I was just concerned about like HIPAA, you know.
Absolutely, right, yeah, we don't want them, no social shaming, we just wanna be able to look at it and then if they see something and then they'll just like get, hey, can you step to the side, I just wanna take your temperature and double check type of thing versus you know, just moving along and not having anybody, oh, watch out, he he or she has it because the screen went off, no, we don't wanna do that, absolutely not.
Okay, I'll continue on if it's okay, I had a few more, uh and people can pick it up with the topics. Um regarding high-risk staff, I mean, I I'm concerned about our staff, I I know we all are, we want a safe staff that's healthy. Um how are you defining that high-risk staff? Is it age, is it comorbidities, is it ADA's? I mean, how how are we defining? What is that staff that can't come to school and work with the students?
So the the first thing we did was, we did put out a survey to see a- a- uh which teachers think that they might have an issue. Uh we're going to be working individually with each with each person that feels that they cannot come back to work safely. Um we've also worked with uh, we've had just some conversations with legal counsel about that. Um and it is gonna be a case by case basis uh in terms of um yeah, comorbidities, uh uh what 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 can be documented um uh and what what may be happening in the in the home. Um additionally, uh uh you know, i- if there is a a quarantine that's ordered, you know, by the Board of Health in their house, and then you have that short-term issue. Um so um i- i- it needs to be, and and Mr. Patton can chime in, but I believe that this is gonna be taken on a case by case basis in terms.
Absolutely, yes, and again, um just like with Mr. Eight, you said, we just sent out a survey. Um we have a, we'll we'll have to work through with legal on developing that as well, as well as um those those staff members meeting with myself and Mrs. Pillits, who is our um other, our.
EDA compliance.
Yes, correct.
You know, if we have um a staff or students that say they're COVID positive, you're expecting documentation, correct? I mean, you would went to see a positive test or documentation from a physician that that the staff member is truly quarantined or that something is going on.
Or, yeah, or a communication from the Board of Health.
Okay, right, right, okay, just, yeah, okay, thanks. And as far as virtual day, that week where they're virtual, um the students and the staff, the expectation is they have to fulfill that whatever their usual time slot is, right, seven to three, they'd have to be available, the staff, the teachers.
Yes.
Yeah, but I wouldn't call it be available because I feel like that makes it sound like it's office hours.
Oh, no, I want them to be.
Right.
Engaged.
Engaged, exactly, yeah.
Great, okay, um as far as food service, what happens for the week that the students are at home? Um the one week on, one week off, the majority of our students are on free and reduced lunch.
Right, we're working, yeah, we're we're looking into a plan for those uh students that are off that week of having the parents or getting them food for the week, where we're actually working on a plan as we speak of how we can get food to them, our prepackaged food for the week for for those students.
Cuz I know this, the fall, in the spring, I was preaching about. Cause I know this, the fall, in the spring, I was appreciative of the efforts that were done. But I really feel since this is all year, we really need to feed those.
Absolutely. That's so. We're, we're looking into just exactly how we can get, whether it's, you know, every other day that they want to come in and get two days worth of food for parents or how we send it home. Or if we send home stuff that they can make, we're, we're actually working on that this summer to how we're going to accommodate the off weeks.
Um, I do, I do want to say we gotta do better. A lot of the parents can't get up to the buildings to, um, pick up, um, during, during the initial spring. A lot of people was off work, people are back at work. Um, and we cannot burden our, I mean, we gotta figure out a solid plan other than, and then also how do we manage that traffic of all those parents coming to the building? So.
Totally, right.
Um.
I agree. I got a question for you, uh. You had said the survey, there, there were some teachers that wouldn't feel safe coming back to work. Are we going to require medical document, documentation that's saying they can't come back to work?
We will have to work with legal counsel as well as meeting with myself and, and Brooke to determine whether they are able to, uh, fulfill that. Um, so it's going to, again, as Mr. Hanky stated before, it will have to be case-by-case basis.
Okay, so what happens to, well, I'll talk to you later about it.
Okay.
Um, two last things, extracurriculars and sports. I know, I, I was at a training last week and they were talking about if we're going to have a football game against another team, we'd all have to, all the players have to be tested for COVID within seventy-two hours. Um, for co-curricular, for, um, for those games. I honestly, I, I don't even know if we get results back in seventy-two hours. Um, I, are we talking about extracurriculars? I'm thinking this is mostly at the high school. Is this something that's still being developed? I mean, do, do we really think that we're going to have football games if we have to have our team tested, everyone tested?
The short answer is we don't know. Um, the, the, but I would like to address specifically because there was some, a, a letter sent to me in terms of band and choir. There's nothing I'd like better than to have band and choir back right now. Uh, right now, I, I did, I did send, uh, the, uh, uh, for an update from legal counsel. That you will see some districts and, um, th- that are doing things that our legal counsel and the Cleveland Clinic do not believe are necessarily safe in terms of band and choir activities. Uh, it's, it's very, very difficult right now because we don't have clear guidance about whether or not students can play instruments out in the open i- if they're outside, certainly not inside. Uh, they're very, very concerned, the medical professionals, about people singing inside and about, uh, people playing instruments inside. We are trying as, as quickly as we can to get some more guidance on having band and choir. I think it's, it, I think it's very important that we do, but we do so safely. Uh, secondly, uh, right now, uh, our fall sports teams are following the OHSAA guidance. Uh, uh, and they are, they are indeed practicing. Uh, however, uh, our athletic director and Ms. Thomas is, is liaison can talk about this, uh, you know, i- is, is working with, uh, uh, athletic directors that are, that are, that are close in proximity to us. And if we do go to the level four purple, uh, uh, they're going to shut down the camps. Um, there, we have not had an instance, uh, yet of, of a COVID diagnosis. Uh, that could change, that could change tomorrow, and that would also shut down the camps. Um, football is obviously a contact sport and, uh, the, the guidance keeps changing and the OHSAA leadership is now changing. Uh, uh, that, so there is, there is a lot of uncertainty there, uh, in terms of that.
Appreciate that. And one last question.
Kristin, can I add something real quick just to follow up with extracurricular? Um, in regards to band and choir, I do think that our band should be able to participate in activities right now, just as our athletics are participating in activities. Um, there are band activities that could be happening and occurring right now that don't involve instruments, that don't involve our students being together. Um, so like marching and things like that would, they would file, they could follow the same social distancing guidelines that our athletics are following.
I, and I, I got that over to, um, Eric a couple of days ago. I'm just looking for a little more clarity on it. I'm just trying to keep everybody safe and I totally agree with Ashley.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just coming from, you know, assistant band director. I know that there are.
I, oh, no, there are. They, they can march, they can do some things. And we, I, I want to get them back as quick as possible. I know I'm being super cautious about this. Uh, but, um, you know, I just want to make sure that, 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 that everybody's going to be safe. So.
Yeah, and equal because we, we have to keep our, our arts and theater equal with our.
Absolutely. I absolutely, the only, the only, I know, but the only issue is, is that there, there are some things unfortunately for, for, and, and I understand that this is not necessarily the fairest thing on earth, but, you know, the Athletic Association, the state is saying one thing about sports and the other thing about, you know, and other things are being said about, uh, band and choir. And we, I am trying as, as deliberately as possible to get that started. So.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, one last question or request, I guess. We know the, the federal government right now with Betsy DeVos in charge of Department of Education isn't really on board or is, actually she's mandating all these schools to open. They don't think, I guess, that we need extra money. She said it was similar to opening a Home Depot. Um, there's CARES Act money out there, but I don't think that's going to cover all the costs of what we need to start school. State resources, they haven't been given much money from the, the feds. Um, so a lot of these financial purchases are, are going to follow us locally. And, um, I just wondered if Mr. Sluka, as you're purchasing these things for COVID, if you could just keep a tally maybe separately?
Absolutely. I'm going to give a, um, the board, once I get it, all the final pricing for the, uh, for the, uh, ionization and all the PPE supplies, I'll give the board a, a total tally of, of what that looks like.
Because maybe at some point after January first, depending what happens, there possibly would be money we can get back, depending on who's in White House and that. I don't know, but I just think.
I, I think I just saw the governor wants to use some of the state's CARES Act money to give to schools. But we'll see where that goes, whether it's the non-publics or charters versus us.
Well, I appreciate, um, answering the questions.
First, no, absolutely. And, and to, to piggyback some of the things, and this is following up a, a couple of weeks ago with, uh, a question we got, and I think we want to get it out there, a bunch of people watching. Due to the color coding for Cogga County, we have decided that we will not reopen playgrounds due to the risk. So I just want that, that out there, that we are not going to open the playgrounds for, for the risk of, um, the way the county is in right now. So.
Okay, I had, I think somebody said on this, uh, maybe you did, Mr. Hanky, that if we hit a level four, everything shuts down?
Well, um, that, you know, and, and this is a good thing. The ESC just put out a survey to all local districts. And I hope that there is some consensus behind this. There is not a mandate for it. I would, I would, I would highly, uh, uh, recommend to the board that if i- i- it's part of the, uh, uh, remote learning plan and is in our reopening plan, that if we do indeed hit a level four, that we shut the buildings down. I, I really believe that that's, that, that means that we are in a situation where, uh, community spread is very, very high. Uh, i- to the level, to the, as bad or worse than at, at the top of when, when we were. Um, there are, the feedback, the initial feedback we're getting in the county is that everyone's kind of on board with that. Not, not completely, but, uh, uh, there are a couple of districts saying, no, 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 we're going to keep going. But I, 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 I personally, um, think that the board would consider that.
Mr. Hanky, wouldn't that be, uh, your administration's decision because you basically run a day-to-day operations at the district?
It, it is. I, I have seen though that, that, um, you know, as a show of, um, you know, not unanimity, but the, 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 the boards have, uh, have, have, have done an adoption uh, of, of, of that, of that particular level four thing. So we have a very clear understanding of when we would shut down. Um, the other issue, you know, a lot of issues play into that, but, you know, continuity of education is very important. And, and once we get something like a hybrid model started, we want to be able to pivot quickly, uh, which we will be able to do. Uh, but then, you know, if we drop down out of level four like in a week or two, then we've got to pivot back. So that, that, that piece is gonna, we're gonna have to be a- as nimble as we can, uh, i- is a, is a sizable school district, but we will do so.
So it's a good thing we're opening after Labor Day, maybe.
Um, it is a very good thing. Uh, it is going to allow, and I know, Mr. Jubey, that's something, uh, uh, it's a very good thing for a number of reasons, but, uh, the, you know, the major issue here we have are training, getting protocols in place, getting education, uh, the education pieces together, uh, and making sure that all the students and staff are safe. Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have two, uh, comments, um, or resources, um, for Mr. Sluka. We may want to look at, um, the food bank. Uh, we used to do the Backpack Buddies program where we were able to send food, non-perishable food home. It was for a weekend, but with this new, um, our new reality, they may be doing something um, where we could get food for a longer period to be able to.
That's.
Then also.
Yes.
Rysland, I don't know if you looked into Tutor Ocean. I just did a demo last week and it is a nice platform to have students on, um, a small group of students on with a, an, an instructor. And you're able to pull up a whiteboard, a chalkboard, a, a graphing paper. And so it's very, um, interactive. So that may be something we could look into for our virtual week.
Oh, thank you.
Um, I do have, um, one comment. Um, just as we're developing these plans, and I guess this is more of a comment to the community, is that, um, although we're going to do our best to ensure, um, that we, um, educate the children to the best of our ability. With COVID nineteen, I personally feel like we also need all stakeholders to support, um, our children in the district. We can't carry this as a school district, um, all on our own. And just really being able, I guess, as a school board, identifying what we can and can do and being transparent with the community on where we can use their help. Um, and supports to even as far as mobilizing meals and different things. We have a big, um, our teachers, our staff in our buildings, administrations have a big deal to, um, educate our children in this new method. And, you know, week offs, we know parents are going to have struggles, uh, with childcare and things of that sort. But that's where we can bring in community partners to support the school district. What ideals to provide safe places and spaces for our students to learn or have distant learning hubs within the community. So I just really want to kind of say that, um, this is a community issue and just not a school board issue necessarily. And there's some elements that we have to consider, but we're, there's so much. And we just really need to reach out to the resources in every stakeholder, um, in the community to support us in the loopholes that we have. You know, we have a great community. So I feel like if we express that we have that need, that we can actually come together and, um, get our students through this together. And that was my only comment, just really us focusing on, um, and wanting the community to know that we need them to, to support us in, um, ensuring that, um, we get all our children, um, educated during this time.
Any other questions? Al, do you have any?
No, because, but there is no public participation at a.
Oh, I'm sorry. Special meetings. Okay, I have a few more things before we go into executive session. Without objection, I'd like to make all future board meetings virtual until the COVID nineteen subsides a little bit, at least. Uh, as far as our board retreat, I was in contact with Ms. Deborah Keys, right? And we need to pick dates. I would prefer if our retreat was in person. Uh, yeah, with the current spikes, maybe we should hold off until it settles down. But, uh, I was in contact with her last week and we can go ahead and just got to get a contract from her. And we just need to pick some dates. So keep those in mind and if you can get back to me. Uh, on the August.
Which month, Joe? What, what dates for which month?
Uh, I was looking at August or September.
Okay.
I was looking at more, more September. Cause that's this way, we'll be done with school starting and, and then plus it, it's going to depend on when she's available too. She might be booked already. Uh, the other thing, uh, Mr. Hanky said he was going to form an equity tax task force. Uh, if one of you four fine young ladies would want to represent us, uh, that'd be great because I'm already on the COVID task force. Uh, the other one is, uh, the strategic plan is, should be on hold until after school starts. And the August board meeting, uh, did we decide if we're going to change it to the tenth or twenty-fourth? And if not, no big deal. If you can let me know by next meeting, that'd be great. And that's all I have. Anybody else have anything before you go into executive session?
Oh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Jubey, sorry.
Yes.
Um, the, the Department of Education, because things keep changing rapidly. The board now does not have to approve, uh, the remote learning plan until August twenty-first.
Okay.
Uh, so, you know, there's some time for digestion, not just a week. Uh, and certainly, uh, worked through Mr. Jubey on questions and things of that nature. So.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So are we planning to extend that date? Cause I think that'll be a good idea not to vote on this. Like, I mean, what do you guys think? I know the parents are ready for some answers. Um, so what, what is the consensus on that? I'm kind of on the fence.
What we can do.
You need more time. I guess that's my question.
What we can do is we don't have to submit that to ODE until the twenty-first. Um, I would argue that we move forward with the digital only option that we don't, we don't have to have a vote on that. It's not a new curriculum. Uh, uh, but we do need to get a, 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 a substantial number of things in place for it. Uh, but, but I think that my main concern is fleshing out the hybrid model and also getting feedback, uh, uh, from all of you in the community on that, on that particular piece. Um, obviously we're not voting this as a work session, but I, I would argue, pretend that I like to move forward with that.
Um, are we getting teacher input on, um, on these models? Have we, have you guys done any, um, groups with the teachers directly and, um, ran some of this by and kind of got some feedback on how they think this will work or some suggestions that they may have?
I will.
Yes.
Mrs. Rysland on that and Mr. Patton. Yes, we.
Yes, we met with that, we met with their leadership last week and discussed the plans and the options that are going forward. We were not able to just discuss the high school option because that was still in the works. Um, but we were able to discuss the middle school and, um, so they were aware and they, um, going forward from there.
That was the union piece and then Mrs. Rysland also ran, uh, teacher focus groups, uh, I think multiple ones.
Um, yeah, I did a couple of weeks ago, I had a couple of teacher sessions just by, um, like grade level bands and elementary group, a middle school group and a high school group. And I just ran through a couple of different scenarios because this was about three weeks ago, so nothing. I didn't have anything kind of like super solidified. I asked them thoughts about, you know, two days a week, one day a week, three times a week, what do you think about every other week? Just gathering input. Um, and then I've also just been telling people, you know, as if you hear of anything in your local district or things that your own children are doing, send them to me, please. I'm open to ideas and a lot of people have just been sending me things, sending me articles, sending me information about their own school districts, their local districts and, and giving me, you know, like a little bit of guidance and food for thought. And at random people just email to and say, hey, I was thinking about this. What do you think? Yeah, we've, I think, and we, um, I love doing surveys and I've done a bunch of surveys with them and sent out a couple of different things. So I think we've gathered quite a bit of information.
So the teachers are very involved during this planning process because they have to implement it. So I just want to make sure that, you know, they, they, you know, leadership or whoever really is saying this can work or, and are we considering things that they say may not work or their concerns?
And, and we are working with GHDA leadership. We're meeting with them again. I can't remember the date, maybe next week. Uh, and.
Yes, next week. Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
And, um, we also met with them and then these are, this is separate from any other sort of labor issue. This is, this is to, you know, inform them, gather input, you know, uh, and, and, and work with them collaboratively.
Okay.
On the situation.
Thank you.
Okay, so no other questions? It is recommend the board enter the executive session at seven fifty-two to discuss evaluation of personnel and negotiations.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Daniels.
Yes.
Mrs. Kitson.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Mrs. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Jubey.
Yes. I want to thank the public for joining in. That was great. And we're now.
Over a hundred viewers.
Over 100 viewers.
Very good. Let me know when we're good to go, Sherry.
I'm assigning you now to the breakout sessions.
Good?
Phil says we're live.
Okay, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn our meeting at 9:03.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Kitson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tucker?
Yes.
Mrs. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Truby?
Yes. Remind everybody our next board meeting, regular board meeting will be next Monday, July 20th at 6:00 p.m. virtually and thanks again, Sherri.
Thank you very much.
Everyone have a good week.
You too.